We'll start with our pledge to the flag and then we'll have our student government students lead us on the flag.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Here.
Travis?
Here.
Lewandowski?
Here.
Ives?
Here.
Johnson?
Shaw?
Here.
Lopez-Cunego?
Here.
We'll start then, there's no resolution, so we'll start with our student reports, student government.
Good evening. So today we're going to talk about some upcoming events that we are planning. So one of the events that we are having is kind of like a set up a decision day, we're gonna have a decision week. We're still in the process of getting all the logistics, you know, pieced together. But we're gonna have a day where you can come in and sign, almost like kind of like the sports do, but you're gonna take a picture and we'll have one maybe in the porter room and we'll definitely have one with just like a Lockport banner in the cafeteria. Then the students will be able to sign it. And another tradition that we always have is like the students all put their name on like a graduation cap and they put all over the lunchroom, so probably, probably we'll be doing that too. And also this just really highlights the importance of guidance counselors for us. And I really got to learn and grow with my guidance counselor with this process over the few days meeting with them, talking about this. So this just really makes it all so much better, having that relationship with them.
Um, we're also doing a spirit week leading up to our prom, which is this weekend. So here's our like little sheet, we posted these all around the school. We have a grafit day, which was today. We have a sports day coming up tomorrow night and then a dream destination day, a class caller day. And Friday will end with Porter Pride, so.
Always Porter's.
Yes. Go Porter's.
Porter's.
And then one more thing that we wanted to talk to you about was student concerns. I've heard a lot of reports and I know a lot of kids are happy seeing all their friends from the other half the alphabet. I know I personally have been able to see a lot of my friends that I haven't seen in over a year, so it's pretty fun. But I do know, not just as many, but of more than a few kids who are kind of nervous still coming back into this school. And I know that the like statistics are updated daily or once every few days. But like they've been like watching those and I know a few of my friends have been like, they're no longer coming to school because their parents just don't feel safe with them in the building due to the rising cases. So there was that, like just sense of uneas- uneasiness in the classes. But I have gotten a few reports as well that people are just happy to see other people after all this time.
Also, a lot of people aren't wearing masks, specifically the boys. I know, I'm kind of crazy, but that's one of the challenges. But some other things that we're working on for student government is maybe having like a parking lot movie night because all the sports are kind of taking up the football field right now. And then we're trying to have some type of like minute to winner games in the parking lot, just to bring some more fun. Probably near towards the end of the year, kind of like as a last hurrah. And a lot of students are excited for the senior late night event and everybody's just excited to come out and be back out. So overall, I would say pretty nice, pretty fun, but just a little bit of some safety concerns. And the kids watch the tracker like it's a March Madness game, like I'm not even kidding you. I'm like, I'll see you in the English class and I'll be like, guys, like, we got an essay.
Yeah, it's definitely been an adjustment, getting back four days a week with those assessments and having homework every night that's due the next day. So that's definitely, that's definitely been different. But hopefully we'll get a good routine going again, but it's been a lot of fun and we have a lot of things to look forward to, so.
Good to be back.
Yes, good to be back, yeah.
We need the box for sure. Any questions? No?
All right, thank you.
One more, thank you.
Hey, thanks so much.
I'm gonna stay back there and just, there's nothing, because I'm. Their academic endurance we are working on and I'm working on my own. But ultimately, the kids have been great. I mean, I have, you know, that's been great. It has been, I think, exciting. People are happy. And i- it's been nice teaching kids. The biggest struggle, I think, are the things that we anticipated being struggles and that is just simply trying to do the best by the kids that are in front of you and just trying to support the kids at our home. At the end of the day, the message that I have given to all members is just basically do your best. And I think that we are working with a staff that is amazing and I think that they will do best by kids as much as they feasibly can. But they're all walking around looking like me right now, just trying to manage it with the shortened time for helping kids now in the new schedule and more kids to help. It's, I think we're exhausted. So just acknowledging that there are some changes out there. So honestly, that's pretty much it. I just wanted to share that with you, so. Appreciate everything. Thank you.
Hi, when we're not being here for the IASB governing board report, I don't see anything really coming up. Are you definitely ready?
No, I have some legislative report I'll share with the board, some, lots of activity in the legislature, but nothing with, with IASB other than IASB is warming up to do the triple I conference. They're hoping to hold it in person, so we'll actually see in November 2021 if they will have it in person. The only correspondence we received is the process has begun for the IASB resolutions. So we'll get that to Mrs. Johnson. There's Mrs. Johnson, so.
All right, Foundation.
Hello. Kate Dean, our director, is here to present. Show our new website that she's got up and running for the foundation. I can also report that with scholarships coming in, we have a significant amount and we're very excited about the number of applications that came in, so. Once you get plugged in, Kate, it's all yours.
I'm up.
There we go. All right, so our website is up and running. It is 205foundation.lths.org. But here it is, and it has all her information on it. This has like the main website for the school, it has sliders, golf outing, anything coming up, follow us on social media, all that fun stuff, our mission, our projects, so these will be updated. So it just has information on our, the digital creation studio and just follow us on social media. That's all we really have going on right now. Events, hopefully, we, we hope to see our events calendar filled up more. But right now we just, we have the golf outing going on, or coming up in June. Testimonials, these are some photos from past events, which is fun. And then if you come back up to these tabs, there's information about like our history, our vision, mission goals, meet the board members, scholarships and grants, so if you want to become a scholarship partner and sponsor a scholarship. Next year, our scholarships will be listed here as well as on the school's website. Teachers can come get the mini grant information from our website, ways to give back, general donations. The employee donation form is here as well, create a legacy, the pathway bricks, contact information and our donate button, which goes to our PayPal. And that's, that's all we have. This was our, our big exciting thing. That's all I got. Any questions?
Is it functional now?
Yes, it's functional now, it's live now.
And you mentioned scholarships and grants. Are you going to take over the scholarships and grants or is the council department still gonna do that for the whole school?
I'm, I'm still gonna be working with the guidance department doing those, but we do, I'm, I'm in charge of the foundation grants. The, the donations of, from the scholarships, from families and stuff like that that go through the foundation. Okay. Great. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, did you have anything, I know that Dr. McBride put Kate a little bit on the, what is it, the triple I conference that we hopefully will meet in person, but is there anything else to add?
I just want to do a quick, quick note. I went to the National School Board Conference online, virtually. Attended that couple of days and the key theme is stuff that we are doing, so that's a good thing. It was talking about the voice of the child, so they were really looking at kids and told us we need to make sure we listen to the students, let them have a voice on what's going on in the school and the classroom. One thing was interesting was they asked the students, okay, think of your favorite teacher. Tell us what it is by then to make them your favorite teacher. And the thing they said was, they helped them find their voice, they listened to them. They check on them when they're missing, so if they don't show up in class or something, they follow up with them. And they also check on them when they're struggling, to say, can they help? And they say, well, also not think about your non-favorite teacher. And they say, sometimes they don't understand what's going on with them. They don't respond to emails when they're asking for help. And sometimes they don't explain things where they can understand it. So that's the key things that was going on when they had the students. And I know we are doing some of that, listening to the voice of the students, so we should always keep that in mind. You know, because that's our main focus, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Lynne, for attending that. Questions?
Legislative report, just a couple of things. One, start with the federal level. The third district congressional representative, Congresswoman Marie Newman, has instituted sort of a visit in Cook and Will County that she serves with area superintendents. So visited a, a number of Will County superintendents that she represents right here and updated superintendents on two things. One, federal ESER funding, there's ESER one, two, and three, these are flights of grant monies. Many, many of the people here would knows that, know that as the CARES grant. So gave superintendents an update of where those ESER funds are going and moving. She also gave us a preview of the pending infrastructure bill and just her staff briefed us on schools in that bill, that federal bill, being defined as essential infrastructure. And helped us understand how the federal government will be looking at that, how there might be some available funds as an infrastructure entity. And her sort of thought that we really wouldn't see that infrastructure bill make its way through Congress till probably the end of August. So it was a good conversation. Things are very busy in the state legislature. There's over 500 bills, not all of them related to school, pending. But here are a few that are of, of interest that we're keeping our eye on. House Bill seven, House Bill seven is a school consolidation bill that is, is seeking to develop a committee that would identify school districts in Illinois that should be consolidated into K through 12 districts. A number of the groups that we belong to, the high school district of Organization of Illinois, South Cook Organization. We oppose this bill primarily because it, it removes, as proposed, local school board involvement in that process. In essence, it proposes a committee that would identify communities that could consolidate and then would turn that over to the regional office of education to carry out that consolidation. And so our feeling is the elected officials here, local school board members, should have participation and representation in that. It has not made its way out of committee, which sometimes says that it might not be advancing along the legislative track. House Bill 2789, this was originally proposed in the fall, it sort of was a little bit dormant and now is back, that the state would establish hard community spread and we'll talk about that in my report, I have a graphic to share with the board, that's also available on our website. Hard community spread numbers that would dictate operations in school buildings. It's being hotly debated because the Illinois Department of Public Health does not have the authority to determine operations in schools, so there's an arm wrestle going on between the Illinois Department of Public Health and the Illinois School Board of Education. And actually, the only entity that can close a school is the regional office of education. So lots of players in, in this conversation, as you can imagine. House Bill 40 is, is sort of making its way, Dr. Huntington, I'm sure, is keeping her eye on it. What it proposes is to extend the age that our transition students would be eligible for services by an additional two years. So the last day before a student's 23rd birthday, as opposed to the last day before a student's 22nd birthday. And then a Senate Bill 2091, we're really paying attention to. It is a bill that proposes the collection of very, very detailed discipline data. Every two years, we're required, schools are required to do an Office of Civil Rights report. And this, from what it's been described to me, would almost be akin to an annual, almost detailed level of Office of Civil Rights. Particularly, this bill is directed at, there are many things that our deans and our building administrators could talk to that are coded as other. For example, call home, warning. Student conversation could be coded as, as other and there's not necessarily a suspension or a decision that there was an infraction committed. Asking for the logging and the reporting of each one of those in detail, as opposed to something like other. We actually do very, very thorough logging, you can see it in your monthly just discipline report, but there is some concern. Finally, the ISBE advisory board has started to meet. This is the advisory board that gave us documents in June and in July of 2020 guiding in COVID times, so they're preparing documents, they've got a draft ready. Don't know when they're gonna release it in terms of what August 2021 will look like with COVID-19, which despite vaccination, many think will still be with us, present, and something we have to sort through. Questions on any of that legislation?
One with the school consolidations, is it, it's been around for years. Does it seem to be taking any, picking up any steam now?
This had some initial support, Mrs. Johnson, and there was some prediction that it would make it out of committee, which goes to the, you know, the, the full house for a vote, but it has stalled in committee. And I think its main stumbling block is, is this issue of local school board participation and any kind of decision-making like that. Right? You're elected by Lockport Township citizens to represent their interests in terms of this high school district and so there is concern that factoring your voices out of that or, or any, you know, Board of Education in the state of Illinois, I think that might be resonating with lawmakers, so.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
All right, communications, do we hear?
We had one added in.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, and I apologize if I say her name wrong, we received a note of thank you from Christine Meldice, is that correct? Mel Dice, okay, who is thanking us, she is Dr. Greenan's secretary, thanking us for the donation we made to the Tunnel of Towers Foundation in memory of her late father.
Thank you. All right. Freedom of information requests, we can see them there. And we had three of them. All right, public comments on agenda topics. A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak and sign in and provide all information requested on the sign in sheet, including the agenda item they will be addressing. The board president will call speakers up by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker, per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow up. Oh, okay, thank you. I have Mrs. Chandraana.
Yeah, it's right up here, Mrs. Chandraana.
Hello, board members, Dr. McBride and other administrators in the building. My name is Missy Chandraana and I am a current mom of a junior in the building and a freshman who attends East Campus in the modified program. This is my fifth year at Lockport of a 16-year term I intend on serving, once my second grader graduates in 2031. I'm very invested in our school because I'm gonna be spending a lot of time here, as I already have. I'm here to talk today about our live streaming and our all-in. It is exciting to have all the students back in the building, but I also feel that we may be doing a disservice to our 260 students who are currently not in the building as of today. We are not currently providing live streaming as other similar districts, Lincoln Way, Stag, Sandberg, Andrew, to our students who are quarantining. I did watch the video that Dr. McBride sent that was made by a sophomore teacher and I do not recall her name. And she talked about things that she had implemented this year, including newsletters, recording her videos, things of that nature. And I found that very interesting because as a mom of a junior, I've received one email this morning from a teacher, no newsletters, and nine emails I've pounded from one other teacher since January. Otherwise, my communication from all the other teachers in the building, I have not. I have not received newsletters, I have not been provided updates, I've gone along and asked my daughter and been an active parent. Although I appreciate what this teacher did, I don't think that is the norm and I don't think our teachers have time to let that be their norm. As for the recorded videos, I had an opportunity to reach out to three students who unfortunately are currently quarantined, not by their choice. One of them said that she was offered remote connection time and she did participate. As for the recorded lessons, one teacher had one video and one teacher had two out of seven teachers over three days. So she has the option to do the remote connection. When she was sent home on Monday, she was sent home and told to quarantine, she did not receive any email follow-up. She did not receive any instruction, although our website does entail and has a very nice presentation on what to do if you're quarantined. She is 15 years old and she did not know that she should go to our website. She was not given great instruction, but luckily she has a mom who's an educator and advocated on her behalf. I think as part of the 260 quarantine students, I think we failed her last week and I think we're gonna fail her this week by not providing live instruction. I have another student who is medically not able to come to the building due to a surgery. For three days straight, she logged into a Google Classroom during Porter connection time. For three days, that teacher was unavailable because students came in the classroom and she had to teach those students. That student went untaught for those three days. She was not provided live stream and she was not provided time during the Porter connection time that is mentioned in the video and that's mentioned on the website. There's another student who was also quarantined last week. It took over 48 hours to get a response from a teacher because as Mrs. Cooper mentioned, these teachers are overwhelmed. They're trying to teach the in-person students and respond to the teach, to the students who are not in person because we are choosing not to livestream, as other districts are doing. I question if we're all in because it's apparent that we're not all in the building. I don't know and I didn't go back to look at the information provided to me, but I don't know if when the all-in decision was made, obviously I had to hybrid or go all-in. But if I had a live streaming for five days a week, I think my junior would have chosen that. I think many juniors and many seniors who have prom, who have important games, who have important plays, who have the 10% dinner, who have the senior dinner coming up, would have attended possibly to livestream so that they can attend those events. I know of a student who was quarantined on Friday, who ironically didn't come to school on Friday to not get quarantined, but received that phone call. She now cannot participate in her play because that quarantine will fall during that period. I do know that I myself received a phone call on Friday in regards to my daughter, who's in this room with me today. I am proud to say she is vaccinated. She was double exposed last week. She was exposed at SAT with a student that was closer than six feet to her, which in my eyes, when the building was empty and there was only juniors, was not a necessity. And then she was exposed again on Wednesday. I received that call Friday at 12:15 that she had been exposed twice. I provided my vaccination card and my daughter is allowed to be in the building. I am a fortunate parent that I was able to do that and I'm fortunate because I was able to advocate to get my daughter the shot because unfortunately we do have a medically compromised person in our house who also attends this building in the modified program. I ask that we do provide live streaming to our students, to all of our students because I think they do deserve an education and they want that education. I think that we're asking much of our teachers to provide a long school day and then after that, answer emails and do Porter connection. 260 students as of today are currently quarantined. To me, that's too, too many that are not getting a current education and are not being responded to and are not receiving what they should do. I appreciate your time, I know that you guys have put a great investment into this, I think the communication has been wonderful. I just truly question why we are not capable, like other districts around us, to livestream our education. And on that note, I do know that we do allow teachers to livestream into their classrooms because they are not able to come in the classroom. But yet the kids that want to be educated, we don't allow them to livestream in. We have them sit in the classroom for a teacher that's sitting at home livestreaming in. Is that teaching them fairness? Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Next we have Maya.
My name's Maya Chanderana, and I'm a junior at Lockport. I'm a junior at Lockport. I'm here to talk about mask safety in the hallways that I've noticed and how it makes me feel personally. I was, my decision to come today was rather last minute because I feel like my voice is rather unheard here. We took a survey before we decided to go all-in and we were able to read other students' responses to it, and a lot of the students I felt had similar opinions with me, where we felt unsafe going all-in and we still are all-in currently right now. So, in the hallways, I have seen the same students every single day not wearing their mask properly. And today particularly, on my way to my ASIS class, I saw a kid wearing a hat, and one of my teachers corrected him and asked him to take it off and stopped him in the hallway. And then towards the end of the day, there was a kid not wearing his mask properly, and one of the teachers stopped him and asked him to fix his mask. And he pretended not to hear her and kept walking. And so she got closer to him and asked him to fix his mask, and he just kept walking. And so she asked him a third time to fix his mask. He shook his head no and just kept walking away, and nothing was done. He just went to his next class. No consequences or anything. And I, me and I know a lot of my friends and a lot of students in my class feel rather unsafe being at the school when there are no consequences being done for the students that are not wearing their mask properly every single day. They wear it below their chin, below their nose, and in the lunchroom particularly. They use it, they use that they're drinking their water or that they're about to eat their food as an excuse to wear their mask below their nose or below their mouth as like a mask break when they shouldn't be allowed to do that. And they just use the cafeteria or their lunch period as an excuse to do so. Some other instances that I have noticed as being a student in the building have been during my SAT, a student around me, she took her mask off and sneezed, and no one said anything to her, and she just was not consequence at all. During my lunch period, some teachers came in and they set a horrible example for the students that were in the room with me. They came in to talk to us about parking and IDs and stuff. And they took their masks off to give us the speech that they were about to tell. And yes, they took them off so that they could be heard better, but they took them off completely so that they, and they were right next to some students. And so they just contradicted the rules that they've been telling the students about wearing your mask, and it was just not showing good leadership to the students that they should be wearing their mask properly. I've seen, today in my lunch period, a teacher took his mask off to sneeze, and it's just rather contradicting to the students and there's just no discipline being done, and it's making me and many other students feel unsafe and not wanting to be here.
Thank you.
Next we have Dr. Rattle and Dr. Wellman.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak with you. My name is Dr. Ronald Wellman. I've been a Lockport resident for 20 years. I've got three kids. One has already graduated. I've got another one who's a senior and another one who's a junior. I wrote this out to try to keep it in the time limit. I, you know, like I said, I've been in the community for 20 years. I run a couple of businesses. I currently work for Colorado Technical University for 10 years. I'm in the Specialty of Missions Department as a consultant. And I'm here to speak about the inconsistencies in the community service hours. I'm seeing some misalignment and it's a little confusing to me. You know, and I'm going to quote Mr. McBride here, "The new year, with its resolutions, resolves and ideas brings us back to asking, what does it take to provide our students the best learning and lessons possible? What can we use time, teachers, and tools to open many doors as possible for our students and youth in our community who deserve the promise of their potential?" Now, I've been told by Lockport counselors, vice principals, principals, superintendents that because the last three months of school for the graduating class of 2020, the, because the last three months COVID hit and classes were online, that they waived the servicing community hours for those students at the last minute. And I asked why, and they said, well, because many students waste the last minute to do these. And I'm thinking, hmm, appears to be a little misalignment with the students prior to the shutdown. So what I'm asking the board is a long-term review of the community service projects to include teachers' learning, engage with the students about this. I looked on the website. I couldn't really see what the community service mission, purpose, vision was. Maybe it's on there. I missed it. I don't know. Secondly, I'm asking the board to reevaluate the 21 senior requirement for these community service hours. When you just look at it a practical way, you know, there's inconsistencies and lack of policy implitation, you know, the way it's, how is this, you know, you know, how, how is this affected? So I wanted to look at it really simple. I'm not going to keep this long and winded. But I just want to look at days affected. So your 2020 seniors had three months, approximately 60 days affected by the COVID shutdown. Yet, yet they, which is approximately 12% of their four-year career, if you'll go with my word, in the four years at the school, 12%. And then we just wiped it all out. The 21 seniors have over a year of affected days, all right? And we have still yet to have five consecutive days of classes. So I'm asking you to prorate this community service. And, you know, for these seniors, that's 33% of their four-year career. That's over a year. Does it seem fair? You know? So, let's go on. I don't want to belabor that point. You know, even, even the president, your Thomas Lee Burrows Award presentation was changed and moved. You know, things are changing. You have to be flexible. This is what's happening when you have this type of thing going on. Under normal circumstances, you know, let's just look at today. Today, I pulled, I woke up, I pulled up the, you know, the news on my phone. CNN, top story, America's violent weekend, US rocked by back-to-back shootings across the country. I know Lockport police officers, Lockport has reported domestic calls increased four times over the last year. Four times as many calls of domestic violence. These are the homes that these kids are living in. And this is just Lockport. Lockport over the last five years has seen an increase in crime of 35%. And that was pre-pandemic. That was 18 to 19. It's violent out there. Carjackings in Homer Glen. You know, there's, and, and the school's aware of it. I'm not here knocking you. I'm asking you to reconsider, and let's take this up another level. You're doing a great job. I think there's some room for improvement. You know, the Lockport website alone, you guys know what's going on right now. You've got dozens of links for academic counseling, emotional support and wellness, mental health, and a virtual relaxation room. The kids are stressed. Everyone's stressed. It's obvious. But yet, no mission statement on the community service hours, no vision, no purpose. Job losses, record high, business closures, bankruptcies, crime, violence, families losing their homes, food pantries at record levels. And this is going to increase in 21. This is going to increase throughout the year. Bankruptcies, right? They're, they're piling up. We live in a day, or we live in a day and an age where we need to prepare for everything and anything that could happen during the school day, as well as after school at events. It is important for the Board of Education to take charge and create policies that ensure safety and create an environment where students can learn these roles. Give me practical experience as a superintendent, to create policies assisting major decisions and better learning environment for all students. Dr. Shaw said that. Mr. Ives. As you as a coach, a fast pitch softball coach, did you just send your team, people on the team, did you just send them an email more frequently telling them to win games? Or maybe suggesting the strategy and how to, how to get better? Or did you take them by the hand at daily practices and walk them through the process of how to be strategic and think and act and, and do things physically? I think the latter, right? Are we doing that with this community service hours? Would you bet your, you know, is this process, is this process like your ISM recovery tracking system for your business? Is it that detailed and, and spelled out specifically how we get to these community service hours over this four-year period? Would you bet your, would you bet your company on it? That you've got a policy process in place that's solid, that's going to take them from A to Z? I know you guys have the skills. I know you're overwhelmed. I see, when I look around at all the board members, I see fantastic training that you've all been to. Transforming the paradigm of education childrens, you know, there's training for school board members, leadership training for community engagement. It's all good stuff. Mr. Travis, you're, you're here to hold the board accountable for being effective, transparent, and fair handling of matters. You know, we've got other professional development training, performance evaluation, Reform Act training, all kinds of great stuff here. We have the power right here into this room to fix this. Some final thoughts, you know, I talked to my kids about these community hours, and I said, hey, you know, what's the mission of the purpose of the, what's the purpose of this community hours? Why are you even doing it? They don't know. They can't tell me. None of them can tell me, even the one that's graduated. Other than, they're getting more reminders. You know, my son, he's painting 40 rocks for his community service hours for Homer Glen Library. One rock equals an hour of service time. I asked him, okay, what are the rocks for? What are you painting them? I don't know. We just have to paint them and give them to them. They'll give, they'll sign us off on it. Okay, you know, we don't know what they're for. I mean, what kind of picture is this painting for these students about community service hours? Is that really what you're trying to convey? I don't think so. So, I'm encouraging the board to even expand more, broaden out your, you know, I don't know the history of this. I don't know why you maybe closed some of these issues down, but I'm asking you to consider, and I'd argue that community starts at the home. How about, we encourage, I'm encouraging the board to include some home service hours because people are stressed. People have been losing jobs. People are dealing with their students at home, in school, out of school, changing next week, this, that thing. Okay, this week we're off, Wednesday. Last week, what was it, Tuesday, Thursday? I can't remember now. So it, it's confusing. There hasn't been, not been a solid routine for over a year. On top of all the medical issues, anybody know that anyone, who could here not raise their hand? There's no someone who's been affected by COVID. I lost a job, maybe relative death in the family. You know, there's a lot of stress going on, as you guys are aware. So I'm encouraging you to, that, I'm suggesting that one way to help students here is, you know, let's talk about, you know, let's help mom and dad too at home. Let's focus on, hey, maybe making a meal counts for an hour. Give mom a break. Maybe watching a sibling so mom can go to the grocery store to buy some groceries. Maybe, um, one second, sorry. Another thing, you know, other issues. Help a parent clean the house, mow the lawn, plant a garden or something. Get, you know, get back, get grounded a little bit. What about a student who works a job because maybe his parents is out of work or something, or just because he needs the money to save some money for Scott College? How about if a student works a job for 30 days, shows up every time, every, every day, and gets a two-hour credit or something, you know? Let's expand our thinking on this. Isn't that serving the community, being at a job, showing, being nice, friendly, and communicating with people? Isn't that community service too? Now, you trust the parents. We all signed a waiver for these children to check their health every day of the week that they come to school. We all signed it. I signed it for two of my students. But yet, we don't trust parents to sign on some, some community service time when we could actually maybe make the home a little bit better. You know, this is a great way for students to learn integrity through their parents, or vice versa. Maybe some parent wants to lie about something, the kid's like, no, I'm not going to do it, you know? This is, you know, how do you know you can trust someone? You trust them and find out. So, I don't know, you know, we're responsible for the health of the student and the entire school, but we can't trust them for a service hour? I'll wrap it up. Again, I'm just, I'm just asking, you know, I think there's a lot that can be learned. Dr. McBride, you know, it says, "Time is more valuable than money." I agree. Talent, a talented teacher plus an engaged student, and time equals learning. And that's what I'm asking you to implement in this community service program. Long-term, let's, let's get a process that really makes sense, and get a vision so people understand why we're doing this. And, and let's start at the home because it's a great way to start. Now, I'm not saying do it all at home. Figure out a percentage, make 10 hours at home, 20 hours, whatever, figure it out. And make milestones. You don't get to, you don't get to be a junior unless you've got 10, 20 hours or something. That's going to fix your problem. And secondly, I'm asking you to prorate 2021 for these, for these kids. Come on, it's been a hard year. Like, you already got people talking, just worried about wearing a mask in the hall world. And I just want to thank you for your time.
Next, we're going now onto the approval of the regular meeting minutes of March 15, March 15, 2021, along with the closed session meetings of March 20, March 15, 2021. Are, need a motion for that? Second. Right, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Dr. Shaw to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 15, 2021, and the closed session minutes of March 15, 2021. Are there any questions or additions? Roll call.
Ives?
Yeah.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniga?
Yes. Next, we have the approval of the treasurer's report. Just need a motion for that?
Someone?
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw, second by Dr. Ives?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Any questions on those? All right, roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniga?
Yes. Okay, next we need the approval of board member expenses for April 2021. Just need a motion for that?
Someone?
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw, second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions on that? Now, the roll call.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes. We have our superintendent update.
Yeah, great. It's Mr. Dusterhoff. There's, board members have a graphic he's going to share. Mr. Slager doesn't have this graphic. He has another set of graphics we'll come to for all the folks at, at home, but Mr. Dusterhoff is going to share. And you also have the graphic in your folder as well, but it's a little bit easier to see in color. But before we do that, a couple of just acknowledgements I think are awfully important. We did, since the board last met, had the unfortunate circumstance of one of our students who had some health issues who passed away, Marla Pappas. Now, I always think that it's so important when we lose a member of our community. We just say her name. Our hearts go out to her family, to her. You know, she was a student who left on spring break, and we certainly wished that she had came back and, and didn't. And so I just want to acknowledge Marla's life and appreciate her and send our best to her family. Wednesday is an important day, and I'm sure that the Board of Education will be saluting Kathy Maxwell because it is Administrative Assistance Day, otherwise known in a different era as Secretaries Day. And the first thing when I became an educator that my father taught me is I, I got And the first thing when I became an educator that my father taught me is I got a teaching contract and he said, "Do you know who butters the bread?" And I had no idea because my dad made a lot of southern analogies like that. And he said, "Secretaries in a school. You thank them every single day." And through this pandemic, we could not have made it without our secretaries. We don't have enough time to sort of list all the great things that they have done to support licensed professionals, to engage with students, to keep us afloat. Kathy Maxwell is a superb example of that. But just want to thank all of our administrative assistance. Speaking of thanks, thank you Walmart. Want to thank Walmart. We have received two helps from two community partners. I was out in the Walmart parking lot today. Walmart is, you know, permitting about 200 of our students to park there, permitting parents. I strongly recommend if you're listening at home that you drop off at Walmart rather than jumping on Seventh or Farrell. So, thank you Walmart. And thank you Lockport Police. They did a great job last week stewarding traffic, having a presence, moving, moving things around. Also, want to salute Stephanie Croy in the business office today. Refunds were finalized, $54 of 100 for parking permits. We did prorate days that, that individuals couldn't use a parking permit. We refunded that money. Just wanted to acknowledge and share those things and maybe tell the board a little bit what you have in front of you. This is a schematic. Thank you, Mr. Slager, and thank you to Janine Wheeler. As you know, all year, we have kept track of positive COVID cases reported to us, and we kept track of our efforts to follow the Illinois Department of Public Health, what is called the exclusion chart or quarantine. And I know with partnership of our union, that safety has been a very high priority. As Ms. Chanarana mentioned, quarantine is a frustrating part of that. It is one of the most important things that we can do along with masks and social distancing to, to cut off further spread of COVID-19. The interesting thing about this, it charts the year. We started charting this in October. All of the, the green panels are when we were in hybrid. All of the sort of gray panels are when we were in full remote. And the vanilla, all the way to your left, is 100% in person. As you can see, there's a couple of things, you know, board members, I'd love to hear your questions. Quite actually, we are not at the highest point all-in of students on quarantine. We experienced much higher rates when we were in hybrid, when we were in remote than we are now, perhaps reflective of community conditions. I would still argue both for the board and for folks at home that COVID comes to the school. COVID is not the place where, where, school, excuse me, is not the place where COVID is spread. You can see by these numbers, we have almost, probably by my simple calculation, about 1,500 instances where we had to put students on quarantine. But interestingly enough, our COVID reports of positive cases among students have never really wavered. We've had a steady infection rate, so we've never really seen any kind of spiking as we've had to quarantine students. So, I want to just pause for a moment here. There are a couple of conclusions that I would share with the Board of Education. The first is despite how frustrating quarantine can be, it is an important safety mitigation. Keeps students who've been exposed safe, keeps people safe on campus and flattens spread. We've had a pretty steady report of COVID cases over the course of the year among youth, but we've never had any kind of spiking of those cases, which for me tells me that whether we were in hybrid, fully remote, or all-in, we, we've mitigated positive COVID cases. And that's, that's really what we're, we're ultimately trying to do. Let me just pause on this graphic and see if board members have questions about it and what it represents. Yeah, Mr. Ives?
About 254, if I can read that far enough, I think it is, of the quarantine. Is that 254 that came in contact with somebody here at school? Or is that where they got, you've got phone calls then saying Lucy, no, Lucy was in contact with her friend who's positive, so now she's got to quarantine?
It's both, but this number, this, this particular panel is primarily contact at school. And the reason why, we believe in talking to families and parents. We have 22 active cases. We're 14 days out from spring break. Our contact tracing tells us we had 16 in the very first week after spring break. And then we had the additional kind of taking it up to 22 subsequently last week. And because we're 14 days out from Easter, holiday, and spring break, we believe most of those contractions took place there. So, those individuals were exposed here at school. We've gotten great parent participation in revealing to us COVID numbers, symptoms. But in this particular case, perhaps the concern is, is what might have been happening outside of school, you know, during the holiday. You know, other questions? Um, it does illustrate, you know, the dynamic that we see in the community. I'm going to suspect that all, now, we're, we're seeing in the metrics a sharp plaining down actually of cases now that we're 14 days out, and I think we'll, we'll also see this following suit. It's been exciting. A number of people have said to me, "This feels like a real school." And certainly, we have lots of areas that we can improve, of course. Managing a large amount of students and asking for full compliance of everyone with things like masks and social distancing is really no different than the things that we are asking all the time for the best kind of behavior for our, from our teenage students. Daily, we offer 1,300 classes across 10 departments. At the beginning of the year, we didn't have the capacity to livestream, although we've learned a lot. It also gave us an opportunity to study districts that are doing. All I can share with the board is that districts that are doing that have told us they would not do that again, that livestreaming has diminished attendance, that it's led to disengagement of students, that it has enhanced social, emotional issues, teacher and student burnout. The approach that we've tried to take, and if there are areas that we have to approve, we will certainly approve, has been to use methods that reflect the diversity of all the different classes that we offer. You know, auto should not, probably not be offering the same assistance as, say, a chemistry lab, for example. So, we are, we are digging in, and I really commend our two principals. We've been really working on that, sharing with our staff in the past few weeks excellent examples for our staff to choose from and look at. And both, you know, it is real. Teachers are stretched. And when we have incidents like this, it stretches our teachers even further. But I would submit to the board that that stretch would be even more intense if we were asking teachers to try to provide services that don't really match the discipline that they're teaching in. So, just, just to offer that. I want to take a pause on any questions about all-in that you might have before I just pivot to one other piece of my report. Just the way this year, a few metrics this year, and the way that we've tried to understand the cause and effect of decisions you've made, that we've made, responses that people have. But let me just pause there and, you know, maybe take a break to see what questions you have about all-in learning at this point. All right. Thank you. If you could, one thing I want to share with the board is our efforts to communicate. And Mr. Dusterhoff, if you could put the, the slides up. I loaded up the board, and then also for people at home who might be looking at the agenda. There are a number of different reports. But what I want to share with you is we purchased a utility, and I want to thank Mr. Dusterhoff for moving through it. Just what we've done in seven months to use thought exchange to do something a little bit different than just surveying people with choice A or choice B. The idea is really to get people's thoughts, but more important, whatever group of people are, are participating, they have an opportunity to react to each other's thoughts. So, thank you, Matt. So, we've done 23 thought exchanges. We've had 6,078 people participate, individual participants. Those individual participants have shared 7,723 thoughts and 197,401 interactions between people have taken place in seven months. Just clocking it, another metric you could use are hours. 507 hours of just one, you know, thought exchange. 608 hours of, we've used kind of thought exchanges that were focus groups. And then 6,473 hours for every participant. So, it's a lot of time that people have been online engaging in these. If you could just go to the next slide. You can kind of see here, you know, from April, you know, October 2020 to April 2021, the number of thought exchanges that we've shared. We've had a pretty steady diet of three to four every single month, sometimes to all of our students, or all of our parents, or all of our staff, or sometimes to very, very discreet populations of people. If you go to the next slide, Matt, thank you. You can see the users. I'm the largest user, Lori Christophero, number two. Kushtam Kapoor is not a administrator. Kushtam is a thought exchange executive who sometimes helps us launch thought exchanges, actually helped launch a thought exchange on student discipline. And then Dr. Greenen launching thought exchanges on behalf of him and Dr. Dr. Green. Go to the next slide, Matt. You know, a couple of things, you know, these are just how calculations were done, you know, in terms of participation, in terms of minutes, in terms of, of groups. You know, all that is to say, this has been a really a very rich tool this year for us to, to do more than just ask for simple choices. When we take action, we're able to put thought exchange in the field and not only have people react to things that we have caused and what their effect is on them, but also understand the effect that it's had on other people. I shared a few sample reports in your board agenda. They're available to the public as well. But would just, you know, any questions really at this point? Just highlighting the efforts that we're, we're using, especially in this pandemic, to engage our public, ask them questions, use the information. I'd really commend Dr. Green. And Dr. Green, they launched a thought exchange that had 3,000 student responses to it, 86,000 interactions. So, let me just pause for board members and see what questions you might have.
I appreciate reading the data that you supply us because I like being able to see all different points of view with the thought exchange.
One of the most interesting thing about thought exchange, I like how it uses the language that we use to detect side A and side B, but then show where both of those sides have a middle ground. And for the board to understand how we're using thought exchange, the, the middle ground is where we're making most of our decisions. When you have large numbers of people responding and you see that middle ground, for example, 356 staff members who completed a thought exchange most recently, that middle ground is very telling because it shows where everybody agrees. And that's a place that you can build, you can build some forward momentum. And that is my report for tonight. So, thank you. Thanks so much. Thanks, Mr. Dusterhoff.
Thank you for all this.
Thank you.
I just need then to honor the consent agenda items. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items, number two to number 14. I can make that motion?
Second.
It's been motioned by Lopez Caniva, seconded by Dr. Shaw to approve the consent agenda items, number two to number 14. Are there any questions to those? Mary Nunn, roll call.
Ives?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. Mary Nunn, then to our community action consideration items. The first one would be the community service hours. Do you need a motion on that?
And we do have a presentation from, before we kind of come to a motion, we do have a presentation from Mr. Furkelak and Dr. Dr. Greenen before the, the board makes a decision. The board will notice, as I, as I shared. We will probably here at this table have to hear this presentation and, and come to a decision of how the board would like to move forward with community service hours for the class of 2021. So, Mr. Furkelak and, and Dr. Greenen will share kind of the present state, where, where we're at right now for your consideration. And then I think Mrs. Lopez Caniva wanted to open it up to, to have, have the board potentially propose a motion and decide how it wants to move forward.
Good evening, everyone. The purpose of our presentation this evening is to not only give you an update on the community service hours for the class of 21, but to also explain to you the communication that has taken place throughout the year from our staff to the students regarding community service. Also, some examples of opportunities that students have had and some of our clubs and activities have, have done this particular school year. And also, our transition to the online system, Transio, which has been a great addition that's going to help the community service hour process a lot more efficient. We do have a large team of people that we want to give thanks to from the top. The first person who I would like to thank is sitting next to me, Grant Furkelak, and that's because his name is not on the slide. And I completely blame the person who typed that out. And that would be me. So, we were sitting in-
It's because I'm sitting right here.
We were sitting in the same room together and, yeah. So, we had a large team of people, as you can see, who had numerous roles throughout this school year when it came to communicating with students regarding community service, regarding the implementation and communication of the Transio system, as I alluded to. We've had staff members who have been a tremendous help in reaching out to students who are a little low on community service hours and finding ways to communicate with them and offer opportunities for them. So, we really want to thank the, the names on this particular slide. I'm going to have Grant Furkelak now, our department chair for guidance, talk a little bit about the Transio system.
Sure. So, I think one of the things that, you know, maybe a hidden, hidden bonus to this whole pandemic, it has really caused us as, as a district, I think, to reevaluate how we have managed community service and how we're attempting to enhance our, our work with that program. Similar to, to some of the things that the, the parent talked about earlier, you know, having a better mission and, and idea of connecting community service to different things that are going on in the building and giving some value to our students on why it is a graduation requirement. When we started talking about those things, one of the major issues was we didn't have an efficient collaborative system that we could use to monitor community service. I mean, we were literally taking pieces of paper that only allowed 10 hours at a time. They were getting turned in to our registrar who was that, it was, it was just a, not a good process. And after identifying that, you know, Ms. Christophero and, and other administrators worked with us to get to Transio. And, and that program, it's in its infant stages. And, and like with anything in the pandemic, we've, we've hit some certain pitfalls as we've gone through this just because we're in and out and how to communicate it to the students and things like that. Ultimately, though, we decided we're going to, we're going to go after it. We're going to, we're going to fully implement in Transio at the start of second semester. So, we communicated with our students and let them know, hey, any community service hours that are hanging out there, that are on paper, we need to get them in by the end of winter break. Our registrars have worked diligently to get those in and, and onto our system. And we have gone full-blown into Transio. And we've already seen there is some great benefit to it. It allows us to have our students self-log all of their community service that goes directly to their counselor so the counselor can see it and approve it. It allows outside organizations to actually advertise their programs right onto the system, create lists for our students to be able to sign up and get engaged in their community service opportunities. And once they finish it, it automatically generates logs for those students to be able to get those community service hours. So, it has been really beneficial and, and we can only see how it will continue to improve and make the system more efficient. You know, we've, we've done a really nice job. We have a lot to learn. And I think that we have a great collaboration with Transio. You know, they're, they're in their infant stages. They're just getting started. You know, they're they're in their infant stages. They're just getting started into this. And we've asked for some things. We've we've made some suggestions. And they've right on the fly been making changes with us to help us get what exactly what we needed. So definitely a a benefit and and a good way for us to move forward with with monitoring how our kids are doing their community service.
In terms of communications, first and foremost, I'd like to thank our guidance department. They have done an outstanding job this school year. We all know the challenges that this year has presented to us, so many in so many different areas. And our guidance counselors, whether it be virtually, whether it be in person, whether it be in individual meetings or in small group meetings or in larger group meetings, have done an outstanding job this year of communicating to our students again and reminding them of the community service hour requirement. And as alluded to earlier, I think they're collectively, we can always look at ways that we're doing things and always look to improve. But I really want to first and foremost thank our guidance department for really doing a great job in communicating that to our students. Carrie Green and I, a couple of times throughout the school year, have communicated to the students via email and phone blasts to to students and families regarding the community service hour requirement, regarding our shift to Transio. Many of the names that you saw on the second slide that we had here were a great help in helping contact students. We had Mike Dwyer and Brian Lesnar, respectively, our athletic director and activities director, contact our coaches and our group sponsors to communicate with those particular students regarding reminding them and to to also think creatively about some opportunities. We also had, social media has been a great help as well. Janine Wheeler and her department and everything that they've done to get that word out there as well. A couple of staff members who I would like to mention, Robert Beach, Travanna Green and Jen Crosby, have all individually done efforts, whether it be organizing opportunities and communicating with students to have community service, whether it be, as I mentioned to a couple of minutes ago, reaching out to students who are on the lower end of of community service cumulatively and connecting with them to communicate about community service. We've also contacted, as you can see, several of our local community organizations, whether it be virtual opportunities or in-person opportunities, to work with them, to give our students some of those opportunities in this difficult time during a pandemic. But things can still get done for community service. In fact, the next slide here, Grant's going to overview some some examples that that we've had this year.
Sure.
We've worked really hard to identify different avenues that our kids can get service hours. From the beginning of the year, we've we've held this as a a sure thing that the graduation requirement was going to be in place. So we wanted our students to know when they were going to be having opportunities. So one of the major projects, the the vaccination site in collaboration with the fire department, Mr. Bartley, you know, had identified a number of students who, you know, two student spots that our kids could sign up for. We advertised that out to all of our seniors to start it with because we wanted to prioritize seniors. I think over the eight days, each time, we had fifteen slots available for like six hours or, I think, was it six-hour blocks? Four-hour blocks? So certainly time for kids to get there. Tim Russ in the custodial department has been awesome to work with. He will take volunteers to help work in the custodial area whenever we can get them. In fact, I hear on the radio regularly, Tim, you have a volunteer here to help and and, you know, where where can he meet you? So we've done that. National Honor Society has had several projects that they've worked with and and allowed outside students who weren't at H S students to participate in those. So certainly some options there. Interact Club and our Rotary Club has always been very, very involved with our our service and and opportunities there. Again, we have been limited on on the number of things that we can do and and that we can we can put out there. I think we've worked very, very creatively to get some of those things. Some of our staff inside the building have thought very creatively with giving our kids opportunities. We're we're now giving community service hours for our office aides who are working and running passes, working inside offices. Our park program has has got several community service projects that they're implementing and pushing forward that are just awesome and and great ideas. So we've been very creative to to try to give these kids the opportunities to go out there and and get things done. We've we've met with our students through counselor connection. Counselors have given kids ideas, things like, I think Carrie tweeted it out at one point, hey, the snow is here. Get out and shovel some driveways and log the hours, you know. Just anything we can do to give kids ideas of what to do. That that there's been, there's been a lot of effort in trying to find those opportunities. So our current numbers, this is where our our students stood, our senior class, as of Wednesday. I did update the numbers this morning. Actually, Jen Crosby worked really hard. I just want to make sure that I have that correct when I look at it because it's not in the presentation. So currently, we are at two hundred and sixty-six students, senior students who don't have any community service, zero hours. One to nine hours, we have twenty-eight students. Ten to nineteen, we have forty-five. Twenty to twenty-nine, we're at twenty-eight. Twenty to thirty-nine, we're at fifty-three. And we do have four kids who've completed their service requirement is now at four hundred and fifty-six students. So, you know, the numbers are trending in the right direction. We're 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 slowly plucking away. However, we are at April nineteenth, so we have about a month and a half to go to get the the those two hundred and seventy-seven or two hundred and sixty-six up to forty. Should be should be interesting.
Are there any questions from the Board of Education?
Dr. Green?
Where is the system?
Where?
Where is the system, Transio, the program?
It's on the student, on the students' page.
There is a, there's a link on the students' page. There's also a link under our community service tab. There's an, it's also linked under the guidance page to be able to get it through there. So, yeah, it's it's linked in a couple of different ways. But the student splash page is probably where they access it the most.
Previous parents were saying he couldn't find it nowhere. Is it called community service or it's called?
It is called community service. It's it's got a its own tab. There's actually a a video for, the students still know how to log in. So if you, that right down, if you go to the bottom right, community service, so then there's the video on how to log in and then the link to the portal.
Do we?
Done?
I know it's not part of your presentation. I'm just following up. Do you have a purpose out there or anything of why we want the kids to do community service or?
Sure. I mean, I think that's something that we're going to continue to develop.
Okay.
We've been talking about it. But I mean, it it stands with our character traits, you know.
I know. I know. I'm just saying was, I'm just trying to follow up.
Answer the concern. Sure, sure.
Yeah, because I haven't seen it, so I don't know what you got there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, there's not like a formal mission statement like we have here for District Two oh five. But I would also echo Grant when we, when I go to classrooms and recognize students who've been nominated by a staff member for one of our six pillars of character, that we we emphasize that, you know, we we talk about those things. So we may not have that formal statement, but we certainly talk about the importance of community service. Okay?
Yeah, I, mine are more, I have one question and a couple of observations. Personally, as a coordinator of the Interact Group and the Rotary Club, I love this new Transio system because I get lot, I get lots of requests. They'll fill out those forms not anymore. I think it's very efficient. I think the kids get it. They like it. They go home, like literally the event's over, we were doing food baskets, and I got thirty emails because within ten minutes they went home and did it.
Yeah.
Those same kids would hold on to those sheets for six months.
Correct.
Those kids would lose those sheets in six months.
Yeah.
I mean, so I'm I'm a big fan. And I think the students like it too. I think they get it. I mean, always something new that there is a learning to it, but I I think that they like it. The other thing is, you know, I agree with you that I think, you know, that you guys have done a great job getting out there and giving ideas and things like that. I want to share one experience I had. I had a student come up to me. We were doing the food baskets for the Rotary Club. And there are, you know, a bunch of Interact kids with their own students. She said, she took it upon herself, she said, I need to find a way to get more hours. She said, can you help me? And then, you know, what do you want? And she came to me and said, look, can I work? You know, can I come to your office and help in any way I can? No compensation, no pay, and put the hours in. Because she, she's a senior and she was admittedly behind. She said, you know, I had my freshman and sophomore year pre-COVID and I didn't do it. And so, but she took it upon herself and did it. And we sent a complete submission into the school, said this girl did a, she did a great job. And she actually learned something while she was there. She, you know, she learned some of what we're doing. So I think they want to do it. It's, you know, there are less opportunities down there. You know, think of the foundation events. We used to have hundred, you know, several hun, you know.
Just five K.
Janine, you know, what, at least a hundred kids, right? I mean, we don't have that available right now, which is which is unfortunate. And but, you know, I think, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I suspect this time, last year, we had a lot more than two hundred and sixty students that had zero hours.
If I can be very honest, before this year, we've we've never, we've never had this many at this current time. It's usually a major press in the month of May, get our kids in.
Yeah.
I would say typically by by April fifteenth, we were probably at about fifty percent.
All right.
So we're in a much better place than we have been in the past. And I think that's just based on the efforts of of everybody involved communicating it.
Yeah, I agree, and I thank you for those efforts.
And I think to reflect a little bit about what what we can do to be even better in the in the upcoming years is just to continue to communicate with the hope that we do, things do return to normal. Some of the events that we do have, just to communicate more to verbally tell the students in our announcement, Carrie and I in our Sunday message, other announcements that we have in school, here's another community service opportunity. I think we can definitely build on that and do better with that.
Do you know why? We got those two seventy-seven that haven't done anything? Have you sort of looked at them to see if there's some trend or pattern, like do they work or?
You know, we we've been working tremendously. Mr. Beach and Ms. Green in the in the dean's office have been communicating with those families on a weekly basis. I don't know that we've identified a trend there, you know. It it's it's just a lot of different things, whether students have just not entered their hours or or haven't sought those things out. I haven't, I haven't been able to come up with a reason or a trend or any kind of similarity between the students. It seems to be pretty, pretty widespread.
I can say, I add to that, Luanne. A couple of weeks ago, when when Travanna Green and Robert Beach approached me wanting to step up to try to help us, they did see some positive results where they sent it, sent a targeted email to these students. And of course, it it wasn't quite the amount that, we'd like all of them, right? But they really did see a nice response. So we want to continue that effort. I'm looking at making a targeted phone call for for some of these students as well as we have some more ideas to think about how we can reach these kids.
So if I can make our presentation, we have a beautiful tool that we just discussed three minutes ago called Thought Exchange. So really just using that tool, just targeting our seniors and asking them, why haven't you communicate, why haven't you completed your community service? What's keeping you from being there? And in fact, I mean, it just sounds logical to me that we do that and then they, you don't know who they are, right? They just put it out there and say, this is the reason why. Then we'll have some way to correspond with them and say, I get it now. Because we don't get it. Because, you know, I I don't get it. I don't get why they're not doing community service. You know, I thought our intention when I started on this board was ten hours a year, and then they're done. So I'm trying to help them, I'm I'm trying to figure out why they're not doing it, to be involved and be good stewards of our community. You know, what's keeping them from doing it? Maybe this tool that we have, just targeting them right now, saying, tell me why you're not doing it. Help me help you, right? Food for thought.
If I can give a little history about this, I was on the school board when we implemented this program. We had a school board member who came up with this idea. And unfortunately, she had enough votes to get it passed. And me personally, community service is a great thing if you want to do it from your heart. But if you're doing it out of an obligation, then it's like indentured servitude. The way I see it is because you're giving somebody something of value for free just in order to get the credits in order to graduate. So I'm against this idea. We can do what we can to mitigate the the students that, for COVID, could not get these hours, although that's a poor excuse because they had four years to do it. I think in the future, we should abandon this whole idea. And if you're going to do community service, it should be because you want to from inside rather than it being forced upon you. That's my thoughts.
I was on the board and I was one that voted for it and was in favor of it. And I think it helps, as they say, with the the character that we try to instill into the kids, to give something back to your community, you know.
I, I understand that. But if you're doing it only to for a graduation requirement, you're not doing it from your heart.
Well, we hope that they would do it from their heart and, you know, pick something that they have a passion for.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying it's.
I know where you're coming from, because I remember back when.
Okay, all right, so.
But Mike, I I do want to add, I mean, I wasn't on the board back then. And I am, I am in favor of this significantly. But I, over the years, you know, through various organizations, I interact with hundreds of these students. And they're not there just for a graduation credit. They they are there to do, you know, what the hell. I mean, my, the Interact Club, which I I'm the sponsor of, I see that, I see that firsthand. They're going over there to the senior centers and these kids like it. We've got two kids right now at the the Ryla Youth Leadership Program and which is virtual, and they're not there this year, it's virtual, but, you know, every year. And the presentations that these kids do, we presented it to the district of Rotary, not district of the school there. And it was the number one ranked school for for, they, they do care. There are some that said, oh, damn it, I gotta, excuse me, I gotta just do my hours. I get that. There are some, and there are some that are saying, I don't care. I get that as well. But I got to think the majority of those students on the chart they just provided do it for the right reasons.
I, and I agree with you. So you believe that those students would do it any way, regardless of whether it was a requirement or not?
Most of them, yes.
Okay.
That's my point.
And again, I was not on the board when all this was approved. I do wholeheartedly support community service. And I, you know, I belong to a lot of board women and just like Vic was mentioning with Rotary and and other, you know, as organizations too. I've seen these kids when we had the food, the food baskets. There they are, all these students. They just come in and they were putting together all these baskets and everything. They were very helpful. They were very appreciative. And they truly enjoyed doing that. It wasn't like, like Vic was saying, I have to be here, no. Or that I was forced upon. It was they were really enjoying it. They were out there helping the families, you know, carrying the food outside, talking to the young kids, playing with them while the moms were, you know, collecting their food. So it was something that they truly enjoyed and it gave them exposure. I I really truly feel community service, you're exposed and you're giving them, our students, exposure to community, to organizations, you know, such as the food bank, the libraries, all of these other things. And that's why I totally totally support, you know, community service.
And I have seen some students, Mike, that through their volunteerism have formed a career. They got there and they they love what they were doing and they, you're like at the library. Oh, I like being in the library. They might have never thought about going to the library, but now that they're doing this community service requirement, they find that they have a love for working in the library. Because there's a lot of things in the library and just putting books on the shelf, but you don't know that until you go in the library and work, so.
And I hope the board has heard the comments tonight in the presentation that, you know, al- always willing to take feedback, always happy to do better. Communication, purpose, reminding, tools.
I think that's a great job.
And if the, if the board's will to revisit this graduation requirement, of course, of course, we would redo that tonight. I mean, redo that eventually tonight. What we would need the board to do is propose, and the reason why this is under action consideration is a recommendation, with this being the board's graduation requirement, a recommendation from the board, we're seeking direction for what level of community service we would have to hold this class accountable for. Is it the full forty? And I think certainly in this pandemic with such a large number, we could find a way to honor those students and spotlight them. Would it be some kind of proration on minimum students have to get between now and June, June fifth? Would it, would it be a waiver? You know, those are some options I might have the board consider, but we would be looking for a motion, a recommendation from the board so that we would have some direction. And Mr. Furkelak's department would be able to engage students, you know, as soon as tomorrow. So we would have some direction and Mr. Furkelak's department would be able to engage students, you know, as soon as tomorrow to say, you know, here, here's the minimum, here's who's made it, uh, here's who, you know, needs, needs to find, not, need to find something.
I think since they were supposed to get ten hours a year, that minimum we should, they need, they should get ten hours. And they got time between now and the end of school year to get ten hours.
You're talking about those two hundred and sixty, you're talking about those two hundred and sixty-six students?
Uh huh. They need to at least get ten hours.
How do you come up with ten hours?
Ten hours every year.
They're supposed to do ten hours a year.
Okay.
So it, you know, ten to freshman, sophomore, junior.
Got that.
During the seniors, they should at least do what the ten hours it was supposed to do.
Okay, they, this, this, these hours are not senior year hours. These are cumulative for their four years of being students here. So wouldn't they, wouldn't you say, I mean, it's the other way around. I would say, aren't you saying thirty hours because there's ten hours that they have to do?
That's what I would say.
I don't see how, how you're getting your ten.
I'm saying minimum, they do ten because they're, we're supposed to do, uh, I think the original.
I think you're saying minimum.
Policy stat. They're supposed to do ten a year.
I'm gonna make a recommendation anyway.
I'm gonna recommend that they do twenty hours. That's it. Skip the COVID year, skip last year and be done with it. Cut it in half. You know, most of them, the seniors do all of their hours in their last year anyway. We haven't made them accountable the first freshman sophomore year. Now they're doing it the last year. Skip it, be done. Twenty hours, we're good to go. We got almost all of them done. And that's my recommendation.
And that's my thought process. Same, I agree with Lisa. I've been thinking about it and I said, I, I figured twenty hours is fair. Plus it's, it's, it's a lot, making them more, having them least a push to do it. And I think twenty, I think that's a good number.
Does that be our policy moving forward as well?
No.
I'm just saying for this year.
For this year, just for this year.
Just because of COVID, so.
But what, I mean, if, if we do that, I mean, back in the January board meeting, I brought up this issue about the hours and how, what are we gonna do? I, I feel, I, I respect that there's gonna be a reduction. I get it with the COVID. But I really, Dr. McBride, you just mentioned it, I, I'm looking at roughly, and if Grant's current numbers, it's probably five hundred kids that are thirty or above. Am I, am I close on that?
I, I was, there's three hundred and thirty-six kids who don't have up to twenty hours.
No, but I'm saying right now, ba- they, thirty or above, it's probably close to five hundred kids almost.
Uh, well, yeah, you're over. Uh, you're right at, you're about five hundred and nine.
Okay, five hundred and nine. I think if we are going to do a reduction, and I don't, and I, and I'm okay with that. I think we need to do something to recognize those students who put the time and effort in to get to that point. Because I think that's a tough message, you know, you got these kids, especially you've been reaching out, you guys have been doing a great job. And all of a sudden, oh, by the way, yeah, we've been telling you for, you know, for several weeks to do it now, you, you don't have to. I think we need to do two things. One is consider an acceptable level, whatever that is, whatever we agreed to. And B, at some point, and I don't have the answer right now, I really want to see some type of recognition, add it to their transcript, something that they get credit for what they did.
We've discussed that on our team.
Of course you did.
To do, to do some sort of raffle. We've got stickers that, uh, Janine already had made to, you know, that they've completed their community service. So we have discussed.
Is that like I voted, you know, you could not?
So that's it. I got an idea for you. Why don't you take the ones over five hundred hours and, um, put them all in a raffle?
Five hundred hours?
Well, well, I'm sorry, the five hundred that are above, right?
Yeah.
Put them all in a raffle and have the foundation raffle up a hundred dollars for our kids. For ten kids. Have the foundation raffle up a hundred dollars for ten kids. You got a thousand dollars right there.
Well, I might suggest that those ideas would probably might require some, some time. But for efficiency, probably a member needs to make a motion for a minimum amount of hours for the class of twenty twenty-one. Yeah, you know, um.
Two discussions.
And two discussions.
Yeah, and I would probably say maybe for tonight's business, the minimum amount that this board feels. Uh, and then we can add, bring to the board, you know, either through my updates or at the May third board meeting, our proposal uh, for recognition follow-up. But to direct Mr. Furkelak, he would, he would know, need to know the minimum, uh, that the board is feeling strong about.
I'll make the motion that the board recommends a minimum of twenty hours for seniors to graduate.
And I would second it.
Without, if they don't get it.
What were the consequences when they don't get those credits? They does the right?
There's one of the problems.
They need a finish.
They need to finish.
Yeah, it would, it would be li- likely the board's, the board's main hold, ultimate hold is, is similar to fees where you would, you would withhold the diploma.
Diploma, right.
Um, is really the, uh, the hold that you, you have, the, the hold over that you have.
That's why I didn't say a ten, but, you know, I could go with twenty.
Spin motion, spin second. Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Vicus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ayres?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
Thank you.
Nice question. Nice presentation. Thank you very much. Can I just say one thing? Um, I know it's not on agenda, but I just, from the guidance department and me being the department chair there, um, board and the administration, I just want to thank you for the incredible support that you've given our guidance initiatives and staff, which in turn has just really supported our students' social emotional health, um, and, and the things that our students need. I know it, it, it went in the consent agenda and, and I just really am, am so fortunate to be in a district where um, our staff is, is just so valued in, in what they're doing with the students. And that's a, just a, a representation of the trust you've given us to, to really carry that out. So I really appreciate you and, and thank you for all that support.
Diane. Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work.
Hang on, hold a second just a second. Travis.
Okay. Alright, next we have, um, to do the, let's see, actions consideration to remove, prepare and install LVP flooring to cafeteria. Right there in your notes. Um, need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Been motioned by just Vicus and seconded by Mr. Travis to approve the action consideration to remove, prepare and install LVP flooring to cafeteria. Are there any questions? Hearing none? Roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ayres?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Vicus?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. Next I have the approval to remodel a technology department in areas of media center, uh, east, at East Campus. Need a motion for that?
Some moved. Second.
It's been motioned by Ms. Vicus and seconded by Mr. Shaw. Are there any questions? I would be so happy when I had a sentence, I'm sure everyone else, right, et cetera. Okay, alright. Roll call.
Ayres?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yeah.
Vicus?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. Next is the approval to resurface twelve tennis courts at the East Campus. Need a motion for that?
Some moved.
I can second it. Are there any questions?
I think it was eight years ago when we did this, right? Eight years ago? Was it eight years ago that we did this?
It was eight years ago.
It was my first vote. Not kidding.
And here you are again.
No, you don't have to table it. Thank you.
Alright, so, roll call.
Vicus?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ayres?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Alright, next I can, need a motion for the approval of the superintendent's compensation for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year.
Some moved.
Second.
Hopefully, we are fighting for all that. Alright, it's been motioned by Ms. Vicus and I believe I heard Mr. Travis. Any questions on that?
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ayres?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Vicus?
Yes.
Travis?
Yeah.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
Alright, there is no policy consideration. Next is, a designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics not listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak will sign in and provide all information requested on the signing sheet, including the topic they will be addressing. The board president will call speakers up by name, announcing their attempted comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the signing sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up. And there is none. Next we go on to our information reports, principals reports.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, it has been, uh, it's been an exciting week for us at both campuses, having the kids all in. You know, it, we've had, um, some hiccups along the way with some of our, our quarantine cases. But it is great to see the kids back in the building and here with us. And you heard, uh, you heard some of the kids from student government say it's, it's nice to, for them to be able to see their friends that they haven't seen in over a year. So, uh, we also did have the SAT test take place here, uh, last week. As you know, it is a state requirement for graduation, but kudos to Lori and Janwa Bray, Doris Fleckenstein and Matt Bartley for arranging and making that, um, possible, uh, for it to take place here. The staff did a phenomenal job in the preparation for that examination. So that took place last week on Tuesday, April thirteenth. And then we have been really busy with, uh, sports and activities and our kids are really excelling. Uh, it's been great to see. Our Badminton, they were the sectional champs. The entire team, uh, qualified to go downstate, which was phenomenal. And that was great because that's one of the programs that actually did get to have a state series. You know, unfortunately, a lot of our programs did not, but Badminton, um, qualified the entire team. So that was tremendous season for them. And then our cheer team, they will be with us next month at the board meeting to be recognized. They were actually having their senior night out at the football game, uh, today. So we'll see them next week to, uh, or next month to honor them for being state champs. So we're very proud of that. Uh, baseball, lost their opener to one of the top teams in the state, but has coming, has come on strong uh, in the, um, do it Stevie's way. And then they have the W G O L tournament taking place as well. And our boys soccer, by beating Bolingbrook last week, became the S W S C conference champs. So we know that that is, um, something we're very proud of, um, to hear that word, conference champs. We've heard that a lot lately over the past couple of months. Um, our football team, um, pulled off a huge upset against Bolingbrook. And actually, they're out there still finishing up the game against Andrew. Uh, they were up, I believe, forty-eight to seven last time I checked the score. So we're very excited about that. Uh, and they will finish off the season with stag this Friday. Our girls volleyball program, um, they are nine and two with their last game taking place, uh, tomorrow against J C A. So, and for the first time ever, we will have a boys and girls, first and last time ever, we'll have a boys and girls volleyball, uh, doubleheader. Um, since they're opposite seasons, but the stars have aligned. So the girls will play at four thirty against J C A and then the boys will play at five thirty against Andrew. Uh, both our boys and girls, uh, water polo teams, um, are doing a great job and actually in the rebuilding process. And our lacrosse teams, both boys and girls, have had record numbers. And we're very proud of that because that is one of our newer sports. Um, but they have had outstanding growth over the last couple of years. So we're just glad to see a lot of our kids getting out and getting involved. Our track teams, boys and girls are just beginning, but we're looking forward to having some great results, um, out of those two programs. Uh, softball graduated twelve seniors last year. And that was really, um, something because they had, um, twelve seniors who had a lot of potential and we could have made a run for a title. Um, and now we are kind of in the rebuilding process, but there is no rebuilding in softball, it's just reloading. And so they're doing a phenomenal job coming out. Um, and one of the great things about our programs, all of our programs, is we are putting out, um, all levels, which a lot of schools during the pandemic are not. Uh, we're putting out a varsity, a JV and freshman, in most cases, two freshman teams. So we're getting a lot of our kids, uh, to come out for these programs and to be involved. Um, and then, like I said, um, boys tennis, they're very solid, but they're just competing, or just beginning their, uh, competitive season. But like I said last month, that spot that you guys gave us at the athletic field with the turf, with all of the overlapping of seasons, Mike Dwyer cannot stop singing the praises of that spot because we are utilizing that, um, so that kids don't have to come in every day at five AM. Some of them are coming in at five AM, but not every day, um, so that we have a space for our kids to, to be able to practice. So, but we're very proud of all of our athletes and something very exciting on the horizon for activities. The Spring Musical is taking place. It will be a, a YouTube edition. Um, so there will be no live audience, but it will be YouTube edition of The Wizard of Oz. So we're very excited about that production. That will be taking place May sixth through the ninth. Um, and a lot of the kids who are also in group and turf will be in that musical, but group and turf did a phenomenal job. They finished second in our sectional and then advanced to the state finals. And we actually had three of those student artists become all-state. So very proud of their efforts as well. And our math team, uh, third overall in our region, and the junior, senior eight-person team placed first overall, uh, in their division. So a lot of great things going on outside of the classroom as well as inside of the classroom with the boarders.
Thanks to Carrie. Thank you to Matt Bartley for providing yet again, a summary of our discipline report for the previous month. As you can see, the top three infractions being no ID, tardy to school and dress code. In addition, uh, from our attendance report, you can see overall, the attendance rate did dip a little bit this past month down to ninety-two point eight percent. I can attest that not only has, uh, attendance been addressed with deans making calls, making visits at home. Our guidance counselors have stepped up in helping with that process. Our administrative, our administrative team have done the same. I can tell you that I've had several calls over this, over the past week in talking with the parent, talking with a student, whether it be a quarantine situation or maybe a different situation. And really a collective team effort in communicating with the student and the parent and how we're gonna help support that student. And that's what we're gonna continue to do. Lastly, on behalf of Carrie and I, we want to give a special thanks to Lisa Vicus. I know that she has, uh, one meeting left with us, to my understanding. However, this is our last principals report in front of Lisa. We want to thank you for your tremendous service and support of us over the years. Whether it was a friendly hello, coming up to us through good times, through challenging times, we have always appreciated your support of us. You've always made that known. We can't tell you how much, um, we appreciate that. Whether it be a friendly hello, um, whether it be an email, uh, we really appreciate your service and support. So thank you. You're gonna be missed.
Yes, you will. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Next we have our district reports, information, student behavior code update.
And as, as, uh, Mr. Bartley comes on up to talk about this, he'll describe the process, but for the board, we'll treat this, uh, any change to our discipline, our student behavior code, uh, treat this like a first reading, uh, which we likely in our meeting two weeks, board reorganization meeting, we might make this a piece of business, uh, so we can move forward. So the board, you know, approves any, any revision of the student behavior code. So, Mr. Bartley, tonight, we'll share with you the changes we're proposing and then we'll move that to an action item in two weeks.
Thank you, Dr. Rutt. Uh, hello, good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Um, we'd like to just give everyone a, a special thanks to, uh, um, you know, uh, listening to me tonight, uh, with, uh, the, the work that the committee brought, uh, to you with regards to our proposals, so, for some changes, uh, on that, for next year. Um, I would like to, uh, make some special thanks to, uh, Mrs. uh, Capur from Thought Exchange, Dr. Greening, helping, uh, facilitate some of those media, meetings between myself, Trish and Mrs. Capur. I would also like to thank the following deans, Ryan. I would also like to thank the following deans, Ryan Russell, Travanna Green, Tom Krasowski, and Ryan Visser for creating the dean video, helping to explain restorative practices to our committee, as well as for helping facilitate many of our breakout groups in our Google meets. Also, a very special thanks to Assistant Principal Trish Sermon, who worked with me during the entire process of preparation and planning, as well as assisting with the facilitation of the meetings. Just kind of give you a little background here. As you can imagine, with coming up and reviewing new policies and behavioral codes, that, you know, can really tax time, and you can circle back around on a lot of different, you know, behavioral thoughts and philosophies in regards to incidents and, and action steps that should be taken with regards to the safety of the building. And during the, the season of COVID here, we had to do this meeting online, which presented that challenge of how are we going to online take a committee that was based on sixteen staff representatives that represented each of the departments, fourteen students, which I'm really proud of. Since I've been a part of any of these committees, that's the most student participation we've ever had. And we had five parent staff and three parents. So, I was really proud about the, with the diversity of the, the members of the committee. But we had that challenge, how are we going to collaborate, collaborate online and tackle some, some, some different topics? Well, after some discussion, Trish Sermon and I really came up with a, a thought that one thing that we really wanted to do was take a look at our behavioral philosophy statement. It, it has been something that's been in the Porter Planner Student Handbook for a while, and we have spent year after year sort of dissecting some of the behavior incidents and action steps. So, we really wanted to take a look at that language and get some help from the committee this year of looking at that language and seeing if we can improve that with the, the thought of some of our, our more progressive initiatives with restorative practices. So, we began with a, a thought exchange, a few questions to get feedback from our committee members, and these questions were geared towards helping us accomplish two major objectives. One, improve the written behavior philosophy, more emphasis on language representing restorative practice. And two, we just review current behavior plans for specific behavior incidents that the committee felt strong about. After the thought exchange, we had fifty thoughts, a thousand ratings shared with, with us through the thought exchange. So, then, we met online, our deans facilitated breakout groups, and we really looked at that behavior philosophy statement. And then, we also looked at a few of the behavior incidents that came across through that thought exchange that were obviously important to the committee members. What, what are they typically? You know it. It's got to do with electronic devices, dress code. This year, another hot topic was plagiarism and cheating. But I, I tell you, we made some changes in those areas, but truly, I think what I'm most proud of with this committee this year was that philosophy statement. I'm proud of the work that we put into it. Those proposals that we put in front of you were finalized with a, a committee survey, with the majority voting from the committee on those changes that we, that we're presenting to you. So, some of those changes that you can see in this memo that was provided. In general information, we didn't have a whole lot of language in regards to academic integrity, cheating, and plagiarism. There was a, a bit in the, the behavior incident plan portion of the, the student handbook, but we wanted to start creating some general information out of that with the idea of really being able to define it to parents and students what plagiarism and cheating is. Because a lot of times, you know, there's, there's times where students know when they're cheating, but there's times where students don't know exactly when they're crossing that line in regards to collaboration with other students and the, the sharing of thoughts and work. So, we wanted to begin with a, a little bit in that area in general information. And I think with the notes we have from this year's committee, we still have some stuff to work on going into next year, possibly to add some more language in that area. The next portion is that statement. This is the only thing I'd, I really want to read to you. The, the old statement is, is strike through, and this is our new statement, and I'm very proud of it. We came up, we finalized three of them and voted on a, a final one, and this is the one we came up with. Student learning is enhanced in an environment that is safe, consistent, and welcoming. The Board of Education, in cooperation with students, parents, staff, and administration, has developed a set of expectations aimed at providing a culture and climate that fosters lifelong learners. Our behavior plans are supported by a variety of restorative practices that teach students how to strengthen relationships within the school community and understand how to become productive members of society. We want students to be happier, more mindful, and more likely to make positive changes resulting in more responsible behavior. To achieve, to achieve these goals or behavior plans, supported by restorative practices, are designed to assist students in finding ways to improve their behavior with a focus on decision-making, decision-making as well as overall character development. I think if you just compare that with the, the few sentences of our old philosophy statement, I, I think it guides us to that thought of, hey, when we're dealing with behavior, we want to address behavior where we actually make changes, just not incentivize actions. When, when students make mistakes, we want them to reflect upon it, learn from it, so they don't repeat some of the same mistakes. So, that was really the, the idea behind that behavior philosophy statement. So, I'm, I'm very proud of that work, that philosophy statement. I look back, as many Porter Planners have had, it's been around for a while, and, and hopefully, this one, you know, challenges the test of time for this committee and, and sticks around for a while as well. Some of the other things we changed with disciplinary procedures, we, we sort of moved, restorative practice was like we had detentions, double detentions, BICs, suspensions, and at the very end, we had a little blur of restorative practices. So, we sort of reshaped that, moved that in front of the detentions because it just, it, it flows better with what we're doing in the deans department. So, we moved that. We bolded pointed a few of the things that we, we work on in our restorative practices, and we're really growing leaps and bounds in regards to those resources in those areas with our students. Next, we went to attire, really the, the, the only thing that we changed there, and this kind of is one of those that kind of circles back around. But we are going to, clothing may not have holes that reveal skin above the fingertip length with shoulders down. Okay, so if you're standing and your finger length, fingertips are down, we don't want holes above that on the students, okay? The next one, which was quite, you know, quite a big change, and we listen to the students a, a lot on this, is electronics. And one thing during the, the season of COVID with the changes of all the schedules, these students wouldn't navigate through the building without their, their hand. It's, it's different than walking around, yes, they have a Chromebook, and that's always kind of been the deterrent to allow they, they got a Chromebook, they don't need their cellphones. Well, when you're walking around, you guys know, as you, you're looking for directions or, you know, pieces of information, that's, then the mobile device is, is the easiest. And when they're looking at schedules and things like that, it's useful. Also, many of the students made great points, coaches, activity sponsors. So many important messages have come out through the day through applications that, you know, that we allow, that we approve, that, you know, need to get information out to the kids. So, really, what we wanted to do is open up that opportunity in lunch, in the lunchroom. So, if I'm in the lunchroom and I'm at my table, they're going to be able to use their cellphones now. Also, some of the students talked about the little difference between their battery life on their mobile phone compared to their Chromebook, if they have to use a lot of it. And, and as you know, the Chromebook battery life is important with, for the rest of the day. So, I thought there were some really great points from the students, and that may grow, but I think that's a good starting point right there is allowing the cellphones during the, the, the lunchroom. We are trying to keep it, you know, at the table, so you, you, you're not walking through and it looks like people are just on their phones and chatting on their mobile devices as if they were at home, okay? And that pretty much brings us to the closure of the proposals for next year's changes. As you can see, the majority of our time was, you know, looking at that behavior philosophy statement. I think it begins there with some of the other changes that I think could be down the line in some of those other areas. But proud of the work of the committee, especially under the circumstances we are. Like I said, it's difficult to sometimes engage in that collaboration on, online. And appreciate all those people that I, I thanked earlier, and I appreciate you looking at those proposals and considering them for next year's student handbook. So, thank you for your time.
Questions, any questions for Mr. Bartley?
What is your definition of restorative practices? How are you guys attacking it? I've seen many different versions of it, you know, around in Will County.
Well, restorative practices, I think, has several different levels to them, depending how far and deep you get into them. I would say, you know, right now, we are really concentrating on that reflective piece, those conversations we're having, okay, we're identifying the, the behavior, okay? We're behavior, we're identifying ways we can correct that behavior. We're identifying the, the emotions and the character traits that are attached to, to those behaviors in our decision-making and figuring out why we made that decision, rather than, hey, you know, you were disrespectful to that teacher, you got a detention, I'll check in tomorrow, see if you had it. Now, we're doing things like, hey, I want you to fill out this think sheet. I'm going to send you a think sheet, and it's going to ask you a few questions about the, the decision you made. I just want you to respond to that. And then, we kind of maybe check in with some of the responses that student had for the decisions they made. So, it, it makes them think about it. Also, it can help us identify students who may need a little bit more practice, who may need a little more support in regards to behavior in our building. Because a student that has remorse, a student that responds to those, to those questions that, you know, an adult would, how an adult would respond, or a student that is looking to correct behavior would respond, isn't always the case. A student may very well, this was stupid, dumb idea, I'm, you know, hey, that may be another, a, a situation, a red flag to us where we may need to talk to the guidance counselor, a social worker, maybe, maybe need to reach out to the staff members on, on the student's caseload, just to, you, you, just to make sure that the student has, you know, maybe some extra supports in regards to, you know, behavior and, and his conduct. Now, further down the line, and you can get into things like, you know, pair, you know, pair juries that, you know, include the, the work of our, you know, school resource officers, where, you know, the, the pairs of the students are, you know, now in that sort of circle and talking with their students pair to pair about their decisions and why certain consequence, you know, you know, may exist, or, you know, you know, why, you know, you should, you know, alter that behavior and why it's better for the school if you act a certain way. So, there, there's different layers to that. Really, I think the, the thought process with the restorative practices that I try to get through at a very basic level, because really, it really starts in the classroom. It really starts with the classroom, with teachers, you know, speaking with students and talking to them about behaviors when, when they need to be corrected and redirected, is thinking of it as something that you want to change long-term, you know, and in that reflective piece, rather than just, you know, incentivizing a behavior. We know that, you know, the detentions are going to still exist, you know? If you're tardy, you're going to get a detention, it deters, you know, the tardies. But is detention really going to solve the student being tardy? Now, some of the restorative practices, the conversations I have with that kid, why is he tardy? What's going on at home? And you'd be surprised with some of the conversations that, and some of the things that you, you hear why they're tardy, makes sense, okay? It might not make sense, you know, to somebody that doesn't know that student's story, but with the, the support groups and the, the individuals that take the time to implement some of these strategies and restorative practices, will sort of learn that student's story and find better ways to help that student, rather than a detention.
And you, you referred to the, you know, the formatting and the, you know, Porter Reporter there and the Porter Planner. If that actually goes to a digital type of format, will you still put these provisions forward in any other format? You know, you talked about the, the new philosophy, the new mission statement. If that ends up going that way at some point, electronic, would you also make sure that that was in there as well?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely. I think one of the strengths of it being digitally is that it's, it's, it's actually easier to amend, you know, or edit because it's not printed for the year. Because there may be something that, you know, the, the, the board or, you know, that we proposed to the board that we think is really important and relevant to this school year that we may want to, to, to implement.
Thanks, guys.
Next, we have the district goals dashboard reports.
Right, we, just to refresh the Board of Education, if you open up on your, your computer and for anyone at home, we keep a goals dashboard that we report to each other first and foremost, but then, as well to the board. And what it's designed to do is to give a informal life to a formal process. We have a set of goals that we've articulated for the district that are, that are long-term goals. For example, in curriculum and support services, we're looking to, by 2025, ensure that every graduate has a credit either towards college, military service, and industry credential, or viable employment. But what we're trying to do with this goals dashboard is, a large goal like that has to be broken down into the incremental work that administrators do and leaders do with staffs every single day. So, this dashboard is really designed for you to be able to peer into the everyday work that we do in curriculum and support, facilities and finance, climate and culture, human resources, technology, and communications. We update it quarterly so that you can see it, and really, this is just a moment right now. If board members have questions about our pursuit of these goals, my colleagues are here, they're doing the work, and they deserve a lot of thanks because each entry, for example, in what they completed by March 2021 last month in the first quarter of, of this current year, board members can imagine takes quite a bit of work. Let's just really want to informally open it up. I know we've got maintenance report and other parts of the agenda, but if there are questions board members have at this time, you know, we'd love to hear them and, and have the right people answer those questions for you as board members.
I'm going to address just the first goal here, and I just was curious from my own thought processes, how are the meetings going with University of St. Francis and Lewis right now for the opportunities for the students?
Yeah, Florrie, if you could speak to that, or Dr. Huntington?
Yeah, so, folks have been wonderful in saying we want partnerships. In fact, today, I tweeted it out, follow me on Twitter. One, several of our senior English classes, Tammy Gallagher and Kara Foyle, partnered with Lewis University's advanced media classes, which are their junior and senior level classes, to do something called Hindsight 2020. So, the students in that class were looking at a variety of sectors of life, about how this year has gone. But specifically, they wanted our students to do, give them stories and information for what was life like being in high school during this time. And our students did, Ms. Gallagher shared samples with me. They did photo essays, just regular essays, they did TikTok videos demonstrating their lives. And then, some of those were selected by these students at Lewis University to put in their portfolio as they go out into the, the real world to get jobs. in their portfolio as they go out into the real world to get jobs. Also, part of this today is that our students were talking with their students. So, and Tracy Hunningway, who's the professor there that we're working with, Lewis University is also, and I just talked to Grant about this today too, three days on campus this summer for students to see what Lewis University has to offer in their media communications department. So, there's something about radio, TV, PR, marketing, those areas. So, I was, this regularly happens to me, where you get overwhelmed by the opportunities. Usually, you're trying to say like, hey, can we have more? Both of them have been very generous. I've had a meeting with Dean Gampro at USF about how can we increase a pathway for kids who want to be teachers, particularly secondary teachers, and they are really open to possibilities. So, it's exciting, and it's just about, you know, taking new steps every day.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. So, this is what, I think this is what our kids need, our students need, to see what the opportunities are out there, rather than trying to guess what they're going to do when they're online. So, thank you. Good. Glad to hear that.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Thanks, and thanks to my colleagues for all of your hard work. You know, amazing what gets done daily, you know? So, I suspect our administrators are, you know, likewise tired, just like all of us in this pandemic year, you know? So, thank you for your support.
All right, maintenance report.
The maintenance report again. Mr. Thompson putting together a terrific maintenance report. Begins again with this room. Mr. Thompson is working with Fry Riglet and with DLA to take a look at some of the issues in these wood panels that we're experiencing, try to come to a resolution, especially since the manufacturer is no longer in business. So, that process goes on to keep this a marquee room. Great news with Nycor and ComEd, they have energy grants, incentives. Thank you for his entrepreneurial spirit. Mr. Thompson has reached out, a $30,000 grant and a $5,000 grant that can cover, you know, what are $30,000 and $5,000 energy costs that relieve the district. Good amount of time has been paid to the March 9th guidance regarding social distancing in classrooms, which is now set three to six feet. A difficult challenge for our teachers and for Mr. Thompson's crew is that it's not a one-size-fits-all situation. Really, the room dictates the spread. It has to be minimum head-to-head, three feet, but if a room can be six feet, five feet, four feet, three feet, we obviously would want the most amount of social distancing that we can. So, Mr. Thompson has tried to re-stage even just last week for the maximum amount of space, and, you know, people come in, they use this space, they move things around. It's a constant issue for our teachers and for Mr. Thompson's crew. So, I'm appreciative, because social distancing, it's an important mitigation. You can see some of the other, some additional thank you to Walmart and Lockport Police, as I mentioned earlier, but, you know, the usual type of maintenance repair, plumbing, forklift, filter change that we do, ports of ventilation, HVAC, and then stadium lights. I wanted to tweet out a joke or tweet at, you know, Mr. Thompson that couldn't just a really long ladder do, when I saw the cranes out there changing a few light bulbs. So, maybe there's a light bulb joke in there someplace. So, that is our maintenance report, unless you have questions for Mr. Thompson.
Is that an annual thing that's available, or is that something that was new that came up?
It is, but you can only qualify like every three years or so.
Oh, well, thank you for your reference on there, we got, that's very nice.
Next, we have the another information report, is the capital project expenditure and interfund transfer summaries.
And these are the transfers that we do to inform the board to support projects that we're currently working on. You know, Afield Phase Four, as was mentioned early, it's really nice. Mr. Thompson, I've talked to see not only our athletes and students out there, but community members, really using it the way that we intended it. Central will be working, there's a construction, and Architect meeting there just last week, and then obviously the large project in the MIS to prepare for those and lay the table.
Thank you. All right. Need a motion to enter into post session.
I'll make that motion.
To confidentially discuss the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity under ILCS 120/2C1 and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees under Chapter 5 of the ILCS 120/2C2. Mr. Lundeski made that motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bickus. Okay. All right. Time regular session is left thirteen. If we can have just a five-minute break, if that's okay?